Be live.
Well, he don't.
Hey. Be live, Ron. Yeah, he gave me the thing. Opening this special budget workshop, Columbia County. Um, there is a change in the order. Does everybody have that?
That's not correct.
Yeah, on these presentations? Okay. All right, so let's start out with tourist development council, Mrs. Van. You got that?
This guy? Okay, good morning. So we have the tourist development operating budget to present. The operating budget request for twenty-two, twenty-three is nine hundred and forty-eight thousand, eight thirteen. Last year was seven hundred and forty-nine thousand, six hundred and thirty-three. Line items that are changing or requested to change are communications going from seventy-eight hundred to eleven thousand. Postage from two thousand to six thousand. Rental and leases from forty-six thousand, fifty to forty-seven thousand. Printing and legal ads from fifteen thousand to forty thousand. Advertising from four hundred and fifty thousand to five hundred and sixty-seven thousand. Subscription and dues, thirty thousand to thirty-six thousand. Gas and oil, forty-five hundred to nine thousand. Non-capital outlay to unfunded to eight thousand. Travel and per diem for sports marketing from twelve thousand to thirteen thousand. And training for sports marketing from ten thousand to fifteen thousand. Next, I'll go over the reasoning for the increases. The first one for communications is to account for the addition of wifi and necessary equipment for the TDC conference space. So it can add a camera and host more virtual meetings there. The second for postage is to mail out new vacation guides. The third item, account for increased building rent and copier lease. There's just a slight discrepancy in that line item and also our copier lease is up this year. So just to account for any increases that might be there. The printing line item, we need to print new vacation guides. Those things, we run out of them like candy. They they go so fast. So increasing that to account for that cost. Increase the advertising budget to correlate with the twenty-twenty-two revenue percentage growth. So the revenue growth this year has been around twenty-six percent. So just want to take that percentage to add that to the advertising and marketing budget. Dues and subscriptions. Several of those entities have increased their dues this past year, so to cover that cost. Fuel, everyone knows about gas is expensive and it's gone a lot. So we just doubled that line item to hopefully account for that cost. Non-capital outlay is to replace computers for TDC staff. They're in rotation for the, we're supposed to do that every five years according to the IT plan. So that is to do that. Cost of travel to attend sports conference, the last two kind of go hand in hand because the sports marketing director has to travel and it costs to go to these trade and sales shows. So the cost for that is why the request to increase those lines. And that is about it. Are there any questions, concerns?
A little, are there any questions, Paul?
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Roberts, administrative services?
Thank you, commissioners and chairman. Let me see if I can get this thing working here.
You have to point it in the center of the room.
Point it toward him.
That's it. Okay. For the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, Board of County Commissioners budget, I'll be presenting the operating for the board and also the non-departmental operating. Okay, I'll review the, I think I missed a form here. But the Board of County Commissioners operating budget will go from three hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars to six hundred and fifty thousand, eight fifty-two. The non-departmental will be going from four seventy-two, five to five fifty-two, five. Okay, um, the budget request changes. And professional services are going from one eighty-five to four thirty-two, three oh two. Contractual services from five thousand to ten. Communications from thirty-five thousand to thirty-six. Postage from unfunded to three fifty. Repair and maintenance from ten thousand to twenty. Printing and legal ads from fifteen to twenty-five thousand. Other charges, forty thousand to forty-four, five. Office supplies, seven thousand to thirteen, three. Operating supplies, unfunded to a thousand, two hundred. And subscription and dues from thirty-five to thirty-six. Gas and oil, a thousand to two thousand. Non-capital equipment from unfunded to two thousand, two hundred. General insurance in the non-departmental will go from two thirty-one to three ten. And office supplies in non-departmental will be increased from two thousand, five to three, five.
Lisa, what is the general insurance on the non-departmental meeting?
Those are the fact, Priya. That's the boards portion that we pay, Hartford Insurance. Those insurances.
Lisa.
Yes.
Go back to page one.
Go back to page one.
The first page of your increases.
What's the difference? What is that difference? Go back, go back, go up one, roll up one.
Roll up one.
Yeah, from a hundred and eighty-five thousand, four hundred and forty-two thousand. Explain that to me.
Okay, and that's in our professional services. And that's where all of the various consulting firms in relation to county projects are paid from. And so if you have specialized engineering or consultants or lobbyists or any of that, like your State Road forty-seven, I seventy-five project, that money will come out of that line item.
In addition, previously, there was a bunch of money for the lobbyists that was budgeted under the old flow organization, which is a different account number, since that organization hasn't existed. We're taking that money instead of budgeting it separately, just rolling it into professional services. So it's clarifying some old accounting issues.
Okay, well, in the future, will you show us where that money came from?
Absolutely.
Previously. Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, since I've already explained the professional services, I'll go on to contractual services. Contractual services increased basically based on the contractual support of special projects and recurring contractual website security services of cloud-based amounts. The communications will increase based on an annual recurring cost of our wireless internet mobility services. The postage is increasing to basically fund our BCC post office box, our annual rental. Previously, that was paid from an unfunded accounts. And I'm just simply trying to put that expenditure in the appropriate line item. Repair and maintenance increase is based on an increase of various, due to various IT maintenance usage. Printing and legal ads are increased due to the usage as well in publication of notices such as the RFPs, employment and required legal notices. Other charges increased primarily due to the quantity of the FCPA forensic evaluations issued by the Department of Children and Family. And that is for child protection investigations cases. Office supplies is increased based on a request to purchase a new office desk, computer monitor and multifunction laser jet printer. The operating supplies is increased to request the actual annual expenditure for, um, we have a water cooler in our BCC office, so there has not been a fund for that since two thousand and eighteen. So we're requesting a dedicated line item for that expenditure. Subscription and dues is increased based on the actual expenditures in that account. And the county pays for county membership dues and renewals. And for gas and oil is just basically due to continual rising fuel costs. The non-capital equipment, we've increased that to purchase a Dell laptop computer for the BCC office. The laptop may be used mobily during disasters and by BCC staff to work remotely if necessary. And the non-departmental operating budget for general insurances, it's increased basically due to the year-to-date twenty-one, twenty-two expenditures of actual expenditures in that line item for general insurances. And also office supplies, we're increasing that in the non-departmental budget, operating budget. And it is also increased primarily due to the cost of paper per case. It went from forty-one, eighteen per case to forty-eight, forty-seven per case. And we also pay for the W-two tax forms and envelopes in behalf of the board's clerk. Is there any questions?
So a lot of this increase is already actually being, it's already been spent at this time.
That's correct. That's correct.
Any question? Thank you, Lisa, very much.
Thank you.
Next one is Recreation Department, Mario Kopic.
Uh, Mr. Mario is under the weather today, so Chevella is going to present the budget.
Okay.
Good morning.
You got a point?
Not there yet.
There we go.
All right, Recreation Department, Richardson Community Center. And as I said, I stand on behalf of Mr. Mario Kopic, Recreation Director. We have our total operating budget for twenty-two, twenty-one, twenty-two, sixty-three thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars and fifty-five cents. And the requested is eighty thousand, one hundred, five dollars. Our request changes contractual services from eleven thousand to twenty thousand. Travel and per diem, twenty-five hundred to thirty-five hundred. Rental and leases, fifteen hundred, remains the same fifteen hundred. Repair and maintenance, twenty-five thousand, one hundred, five to thirty thousand, one hundred, five. Operating supplies, thirty-five hundred to four thousand. Training, one thousand to fifteen hundred. Gas and oil, three thousand to six thousand. And our explanation of budget changes on the contractual, and that's the centers who provide services for rugs, uniforms, pressure cleaning, two outside bathroom, rest restroom contracts, with possibly one more added for the five points recreation. There's one contract, which is with Antimaddox Park. It was extended from weekends to daily. And then we have the sonnet troll vendor and also pest control. Travel and per diem. Employees attending recreation-related travel to FRPA. And of course, we know that's Florida Recreation and Parks Association conferences and seminars. Rental and leasing, this amount is unknown pending new copier contract with the county. Repair and maintenance, historically, the building is older and is in need of more repairs. We need additional funding to cover those costs. Operating supplies, various equipment for basketball, pickleball, volleyball, cornhole, ping pong. Purchasing new equipment to replace outdated and unsafe equipment. And mainly, this is volleyball, which is a new sport that, it's not a new sport, but it's starting at Richardson. And we have to update that equipment, which is outdated and unsafe. And we have office-related materials. Training, we have periodicals, online courses, rec track program, food handling, CPR, first aid, concussion and active shooter training. And gas and oil increased due to increase in fuel cost.
David, I have one question. Oh, the maintenance costs in these budgets. Now, is that what Donnie's department is funded out of? Is that?
Well, Donnie handles the majority of major maintenance and repairs. But each department has some maintenance and repairs that they do in-house would get charged to their budget. So like if Chad Owens at Recreation had to fix something, Donnie's budget wouldn't get charged that. But if there's a major repair, like when the backflow preventer got ran over, that does get charged to Donnie's department.
I was just looking at these maintenance, as every budget, and I know we have a maintenance department. I was just wondering.
Yeah, that's more the day-to-day activity type maintenance.
Any more questions? Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. We got communications, Lawrence Wilson next.
Good morning, Christmas. Down there. Total operating budget, forty, four hundred and forty-four thousand, nine hundred and thirty, fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, going to three hundred and sixty-six thousand for fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. Contractual services, pardon me?
I just said I like them, but you come down.
Contractual services, FY twenty-one, twenty-two, two hundred and forty-two thousand, six hundred to one ninety-two, six hundred. Travel per diem, two thousand, going up to three thousand. Communications going up one thousand from three thousand to four thousand. Utilities, twenty-one thousand, eight hundred. Going down to twenty-three thousand. I think that's a typo. Most likely, it is a typo. Sorry about that. Repair and maintenance, fifty-seven thousand, three hundred, going up to sixty, sixty thousand. Operating, excuse me, other charges stays the same. Office supplies stays the same at one thousand each. Subscription stays the same at five hundred. Gas and oil, want to double that to fifteen, to three thousand from fifteen hundred. Explanation of charges, contracted service Motorola CPI. For the last three years, Motorola has not charged us an increase in CPI. This year, they want to take advantage of that. They've been eating the cost the last couple of years. Traveling per diem. Due to rising everything, I'm expecting hotel increase along with fuel. I want to capture that right now. Communications, I want to add two modems for remote access to a couple pieces of equipment that I do not have access to now. I have to actually go out and visit the sites to get to those two pieces of equipment. Repair and maintenance, increase in this. I'm anticipating vendors to increase their costs, like generator repairs. Brain fart, excuse me. Generator repairs, tower engineer professionals, they are expecting, I'm expecting them to increase their costs, gas and oil. Going up fifteen hundred just to cover any potential overdraft on that. Any questions?
Lawrence, can you mention the contract you're negotiating for tower fees rentals?
For tower fees rental?
Yeah, an increase in revenue.
With the Sprint T-Mobile?
The one on Franklin Street, yes.
Yes, okay.
And Lulu.
Pardon me?
And Lulu.
And Lulu, okay, let's do Lulu first. That's the easy one. AT&amp;T approached the county and wanted to put a tower in that area. They went over to Baker. Baker says no, so they came back. Their second try to get with the county on the Verizon Tower roughly a quarter mile down the street. So they saw that the county had a tower in that area, which is the Lulu Tower, a monopole out back behind the fire station. AT&amp;T wants to do a drop and swap in the sense they build a new tower next to the old tower and remove all their stuff, remove all our stuff over to the new tower. Well, you can't necessarily reuse the RF gear at that point, like feed lines, antennas and stuff. And it will take the site offline for a number of days. So AT&amp;T is proposing to pay the county in goods, not necessarily services, but to purchase a new tower for us at a higher hike and have room on that new tower for their gear as well as three other sale carriers with our gear. So the AT&amp;T is proposing to pay the county one thousand dollars a month. I tried to negotiate a little bit higher on that. They said no, because they're purchasing a tower for us, giving us a tower to have their gear on there at a thirty-year lease. Traditionally, we don't do a thirty-year lease, but given the situation, they want to go a thirty-year lease to try to recoup some of their monies. And going forward, if another carrier like Verizon, for whatever reason, because they have a tower down the street, or Sprint T-Mobile, or any of these other services, want to jump on that same tower, they would pay AT&amp;T a hundred and fifty thousand. And then we get to collect revenue from that after that point, generating more revenue for the county. That's with Lulu Tower. With the Sprint T-Mobile lease and the center of the county there at Franklin Street. Sprint T-Mobile, they're going back up for lease renewal. That lease is anticipated to start in January. If the county says yes, we want to continue the lease with us. Their lease is going up, I want to say roughly seven or eight hundred bucks from where it is now. I don't remember the numbers off the top of my head, but it's looking to generate roughly maybe twenty-three hundred dollars a month off of that tower alone, as well as the the Lulu Tower, you know, a thousand bucks a month off of that tower alone. But the the Franklin Street Tower has potential for other carriers, but this area is so saturated with sale towers, it's highly unlikely that we will get another carry on there. So there are avenues for central communication to generate revenue. We just have to get to that point.
Lawrence, are there any consultants out there that you are familiar with that you can reach out for with direction of these fees? And I've learned a lot in the last two years over tower leases on what we got going out there at the Columbia County Resources. It seems as though that to me, that a lot of municipalities leave a lot of money on the table. From what I'm learning on this lease that we're dealing, that I'm dealing with.
That that is true. A lot of municipalities do leave a lot of money on the table, not knowing. But there, to answer your question, there are consulting firms. And I've been contacted by one that wants to purchase the Franklin Street Tower from the county and in turn still continue to pay the county what it's currently receiving, as well as any CPI increase in the future. But we lose control of that tower at that point. But the good side of that company purchasing the tower, they can find additional sale carriers or whoever to jump on the tower and the county receives revenue from that. Only thing, we're not, we don't have access, I mean, we don't have full control of that tower at that point if we sell the tower to this firm. And I mentioned to this company the same as with the AT&amp;T Lulu Tower that we're working with AT&amp;T to replace that tower. And they have shown interest in that tower as well, to purchase that tower and to generate future revenue.
I just simply recommend that, you know, whenever it comes time to negotiate, maybe you might need to reach out with these consulting companies. Although Lawrence knows everything.
Almost everything. But no, in the past, the county did not want to entertain giving up the control of the towers. So if that's the direction you want to go, I can definitely pursue this. It's sort of a win-win, other than losing control of the tower, where this company has agreed to continually pay us what we're receiving and any future revenue increase.
Well, um, our situation, we're talking about a couple grand a month income.
Right.
Compatible, somebody knew what they were talking about back when they went into these leases. You got another tower in another county real close by here that generates almost thirty-five thousand a month versus two thousand.
I, I, right.
So there's a, there's a lot of leeway there. They come in there and offer you some of the numbers. We've been offering, it's, you can tell you got a commodity.
Right, and they, case in point with the Franklin Street's tower, we, if things were done, no, no fault to anybody that, you know, agreed to the lease back in twenty oh nine, I believe. No fault to them, just not knowing that the Franklin Street Tower today, there's no reason there was generating at least thirty-six hundred dollars a month revenue what we're at. And I've been working with Sprint T-Mobile to try to make it right in some sort to bring that up. That's why we're getting a potential increase in January on revenue for that site.
Any more questions? Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thank you.
Got Todd Manning?
Good morning, commissioners. Mine's rather brief. She may or may not know, last year, we didn't have an IT department, so to speak. We were under the board's administration. Now we do have a department. And when that happened, I assumed GIS and I assumed their depart, or their, their budget. That budget was based on a single-person department, but we made it work. Last year, it was twenty-nine thousand, eighty-one dollars. Next year, I'm expecting it to be twenty-eight thousand, five hundred, so a little bit of a reduction.
Good.
Professional services dropped down to sixteen thousand. Contractual services was unfunded, we're still going to leave it unfunded. Traveling per diem, we don't use, so I'm getting rid of that. Communications was a little high, there was a little bit of fluff in there. And after doing some communications negotiation with AT&amp;T and FirstNet and Verizon, we were able to reduce that down. Rentals and leases, we don't have any of those, so I reduced that down to zero. Repairs and maintenance from a thousand to sixty-five hundred, because it was based on a single-person department. Now we're a bigger department, more equipment. Office supplies, don't really have that, so we reduced that down to zero. No subscription or dues. Gas and oil from a thousand to four thousand, just due to costs, increased costs in gas and additional vehicles. So like I said, it will drop down to twenty-eight five hundred for next year. And just an explanation, you know, traveling per diem is not needed and removed. Communications reduced by fifteen hundred due to lower costs. Rentals and leases not needed. Repairs and maintenance, I like to increase that because additionally, it was for addressing alone. Now we're covering IT and GIS and addressing. Office supplies not needed and removed, subscription dues not needed and removed. And our gas and oil increased due to additional vehicle and increased gas costs, costs, fuel costs. And that's pretty much it.
Any question? Thank Todd. Thank you, Todd. Building is owning, Troy Cruz.
Good morning Chairman, members of the board. Sit down. Okay, here's our twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three. Going six eighty-nine, seven ninety-four to eight twenty-two, seven fifty-one. These are line items that we request changes on. Contractual services, we've added fifty to that, that's the, what you just approved at the contracts with those. And so that's a new territory, so we'll see how it goes this year on that line item. Operating supplies, just increase a thousand on that and of course, gas and oil. You've heard that from everyone, increase on that. And again, the contractual services for the companies that we've obtained contracts with for assistance with zoning, site plan reviews and such. Operating expenses just due to the increased rise of costs and gas and oil. Everyone knows what's happening with that.
Troy, are you able to talk a little bit about how your permitting fees are tracking?
Yeah, well, we can we can kind of see that here where we've gone, of course, everybody knows we've obtained, you know, doing the city permits also. This is up to date what we've got going on compared to last year, you can see the increase in that. And, and revenues there.
So your your revenues far exceed your expenses up at this point?
Yeah, and I think, I think that was our goal when we did the increase on the fees and that sort of stuff. So I do want to throw in though, we've done that with the same staff we did. And actually, we've got a lot of stuff going on with staff right now and lost some good experience and that. So I just want to thank my staff.
And Troy, it's, it's good to see, I know it took some years to, to get back to where your department is, is
Yeah, yeah, I know, had to be subsidized for a long time. Of course, we've had some big projects in the city, so that's really added to that number.
You're going to be looking at trying to hire a new, another inspector?
Yes.
I mean, I know y'all, I know y'all need it.
Actually, we've, that's, with the budget amendments that we've done up to this point, that, that number actually, we've already, we've already done some budget amendments to cover some of that stuff for next year on that, so. We got, yeah, because we're actually using two temp employees right now for front. And we hopefully, one of those has worked out well and we're hoping to hire her. And so we'll be getting two new permit techs and then hopefully the inspector.
Good.
And hopefully between that and, you know, the help from those private firms helping us with site plan stuff, depending on what we do with the, how it works out with the land development job that we got kind of going on right now, so.
You said the permits in the city has really picked up too?
Yes.
And you can look at the, at this and, and determine the health and the future of the county by, by, by the building permission and what the building department
Right, right. Yeah, like Mr. Kraus and I have talked with the, if the amount of people continue that's moving to Florida, I mean, even with this economy, it doesn't seem to be dragging it down. Of course, if we, we, nobody knows for sure what's going to happen, of course, but I, I, I don't think it's gonna, I think we'll be at the tail end of it if it does, if it draws down nationwide, I think we'll be at the end just because the influx of people we've got coming here. Because the, the stats are saying there's still like a thousand, thousand people a day moving to Florida. What I've been reading.
It, it, it's, I, I, I got a, a, a new family that moved in my district from Chicago. And, and whenever I meet them, I say, why Columbia County? What made you say, well, we went on the internet, we saw this house listed. We did our research on the internet about Columbia County, we looked at tax structure and all this. And, and, and the price of this piece of property compared to what we saw somewhere else was a bargain. And they, they lack a rural community and being out in the country like that, so it, it, it makes a difference. They're moving from all over. But our biggest growth still is from South and Central Florida. I, I get most people that I talk to that move here, they are either from South or Central Florida.
Yeah, the trend I see is the people from up north are buying them out and then they're coming up here. And that's the same way it was back, you know, in two thousand and seven when it was booming.
Yeah.
Have any more questions, Mr. Cruz? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Troy.
And next, we got code enforcement.
Okay, yeah, yeah, we got code enforcement.
And we go one eighty-four, five thirty-four to one eighty-eight, five thirty-four. And again, the only thing we've changed there is gas and oil. With that.
I hope we changed enough where it's going. Went up another, went up another nickel today, I think.
Some of them are protecting six dollars by August.
Yeah.
And that's just a little, that's what they got going on right now. It's code for. Any questions?
Any more questions? Thank you, Troy.
Okay, y'all have a good day.
All right. Facilities maintenance, Mr. Dupree?
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
All right, do it.
For this workshop, I want to present the the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three operation budget for facility maintenance. You see, the budget for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two was seven hundred and seventy-two thousand five hundred dollars. For twenty-two, twenty-three, we'll request an eight hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars. The changes will be in contractual services from eighty-one, five to a hundred and twelve thousand. Gas and oil from eighteen thousand to thirty-six thousand. Machinery and equipment was no budgeted for last year, this year we're requesting sixty thousand dollars. Sheriff admin repair and maintenance from forty-five thousand or forty-five hundred to six thousand dollars. Supervisory elections, that's the Duval place. Building from a hundred dollars to five hundred dollars. Budget changes in contractual services increased thirty thousand five hundred dollars based on the cost increase of maintenance contracts. That's going to be going up across the board, everybody with gas and oil, all this stuff, everything's going up. And the actual for twenty-one, twenty-two annualization. Also, part of that contract is generator maintenance. We're going to be adding seven generators to our maintenance contract with new generators that's getting installed and with the, with the increase and with them additional generators that the maintenance contract for the generators is going to go up. Gas and oil increased from eighteen thousand dollars due to fuel cost. Machinery and equipment increased sixty thousand based on the cost to replace the aerial portable lift that we have at the maintenance department that we use for most everything we do overhead. That machine was bought in two thousand and eight. It was actually bought used, it's a two thousand and six machine. There is no distributor, no manufacturer local. So when we have to get it repaired, these people are having to search and find for parts. And this machine is basically a northern machine. So, and we've, we've been having some major problems and spent quite a bit of money on it getting it fixed. And nobody seems to be able to fix it, it's just, it's, all the use has gone out of it. The sheriff admin repair and maintenance increased fifteen hundred dollars based on the increase of cost of materials and the age of the building and twenty-one, twenty-two annualized. Supervisory election repair and maintenance increased four hundred dollars based on the age of the building that there's parts of that building that supervisory election still used that was not part of that renovation. So there's still a small part of that, it's not a whole lot, but there's still parts of that that they occupy that we still have to maintain. So that's, that's where we're at with that. Any questions?
No, sir. Thank you, Donnie. Thank you, Donnie. The landfill, Pam Davis.
Good morning, everybody. We're going to start with the solid waste operational budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. Last year's budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, we were at three million two five seven. This year we're requesting three million seven one seven. That's an overall increase of four hundred and fifty-nine thousand five hundred and twenty-two dollars. Line items requesting changes on is contractual services, we're asking to go from fifteen-five to twenty-three hundred, twenty-three thousand. General insurances from twenty-one thousand to twenty-five thousand. Operating supplies, five thousand to eighty-five hundred. Road materials and supplies from twenty-five thousand to thirty thousand. Gas and oil, we're going from one twenty to two hundred and forty. Non-capital equipment, we had a zero budget last year, we're going to fourteen thousand seven hundred. Capital outlay infrastructure, we were at one point two million seven three last year. We're going down to four hundred and eighty-eight thousand five hundred. Capital outlay equipment, we went from four oh three one hundred last year, asking six hundred and ninety-five thousand this year. Tire disposal, we requested sixty-seven three sixty last year, we're requesting a hundred and ten thousand this year. Explanation of those changes, contractual services is based on annualization. General insurance is also increased based on annualization. Operating supplies, this request is due to our scale software that we use at scale, drinking water, boots, gloves. Has, everything's increased to get it to us. Cost of operating supplies is just up. Five thousand dollars in road materials and supplies based on the price per ton for lime rot, we hear is fixing to go up due to fuel. Gas and oil, we're doubling due to the increased rise in fuel. The non-capital equipment, the fourteen seven we're asking is for, for computers. All of ours are like seven years old, they're out of date. Two Leachate lift station covers our carports to protect our electrical control panels. We're having a lot of problems, we've had to replace both of those this year. And a mid welder replaced an older welder. Our capital outlay, we are actually decreasing from last year. We did one million for the Leachate tanks out at the new industrial park. So it's overall decrease of seven hundred and eighty-four thousand five hundred. But we're budgeting for cell five for the design permitting and geotechnical evaluation and soil boring, so it'll be happening out there at the new cell. Increase in equipment, two hundred and ninety-one thousand over last year, that's to replace a bulldozer. We've already exceeded double the life of it, two pickup trucks that are like twenty-five and thirty years old. We request a new recycling baler and a recycling container of which our recycling containers, we currently have four of, are over thirty years old. And we need to bring in a new one so we can take some of those offline, get them fixed and repaired. Tire disposal. We're asking for an increase of forty-two, six forty. This is based on the tons of tires received, it went from four hundred and eighty tons a year to seven hundred tons a year. To transport those off, it's twenty-one oh five a load and we are expecting an increase of ten percent on top of fuel increase on that. Any questions on landfill?
Pam, what do we charge for tires, just by the ton or?
We charge by the ton, it's a hundred and sixty-four a ton. And we just went up last year on that. And we're just getting inundated with tires right now and Pritchett, just their permits run out, so we're over our storage capacity right now. So they've just come back online, so we're hauling as fast as we can.
So are we charging enough for tires to cover the cost of?
We're, we're barely getting by just with what we're charging. But if it continues to increase, we've got three businesses in Columbia County that use us primarily for their disposal. Everybody else in Columbia County has a contract with either Advanced Tire or Liberty Tire or Global Tire. But these three companies refuse to contact a dealer to come in and take their tires. So obviously, they haul us a load just about every single day and we've had to cut them off because we're at our maximum capacity of fifteen hundred tires at one given time.
And Pam, that was going to be my, my, my comment to you. We are barely getting by, as long as we don't have to subsidize that tire disposal, we need to go up on the, on the tonnage.
Yeah, well, this year we're going to have to probably do a budget mimic to, because we're almost out of money with tire disposal. Because of this, of the, it almost doubled in cost of tonnage that we're getting.
What does it equate to tire, Pam, roughly?
It averages about two dollars a tire. And for a semi, it's like six, six fifty a tire. And the off roads, we bury those, but we still charge, you know, for the tires to come across scales.
Mr. Kirby, now you're in the process now of doing a, a, a landfill study, when would that report be before the board?
We will be in receipt of that study in this month of June. Pam, as she indicated, last year we had to adjust some things for tires and all that. Once we get our study in, Pam and I still owe multiple options as it relates to class one, class three expansion. That obviously goes neck and neck, hand in hand with all those other, you know, tonnage, volumetrics. Are we even going to build another class three or we're just going to go all to class one? But all those hard questions are going to come together in one puzzle once we receive this study this month.
So, so that study also would tell us whether at the present tonnage rate per ton that we are getting now, whether we need to increase it or not to maintain our enterprise fund for opening and closing of your new sale?
You are correct, that is our staff and management's mission is to continue having Winfield as an enterprise profit center. Yes, sir, that is correct. We're waiting on that last piece of disposal, I think in the middle of this month, Pam.
I think they're, they're talking end of June, maybe first of July.
Okay, well, once we get that in, Pam and I and Locklear and Associates, Drabbin Associates have been working diligently this entire time, we get that, that in, that is the final piece of our puzzle to put it together and then come back for this board.
Okay, any questions? We're going to move on to mosquito control. Mosquito control budget for twenty-one, twenty-two last year was a hundred and seventy thousand eight forty-three. This year requesting a hundred and seven five oh seven, that's on the local side, which is what the county puts in. The state side, last year amended budget was forty-five thousand one eighty-two. This year they're going to, we're projected to get thirty-three thousand four oh three. So overall, we're going from two sixteen down to one forty-nine-ten, which is a decrease of seventy-five thousand one hundred and fifteen dollars. The budget request explanations are the subscriptions and dues have went up from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three of two hundred and sixty-three dollars. Gas and oil obviously doubled that. Chemicals, we anticipate the cost of the PBO product mixed with our active ingredient has went up significantly. It comes from China. Transportation to get it from there to here, we, we are asking for fifteen thousand for next year additional on that. And that's just our two hundred and sixty-three for increased dues from Florida Mosquito Control Association. Five thousand for the increased rise in fuel costs, fifteen for chemicals based on the cost of chemicals. And our projected funding for this year was thirty-three thousand four oh three, which should be projected to be the same for next year, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three. Any questions on that?
No, ma'am.
Pam, I, I, I like to say this to you. I really appreciate the job you're doing at landfill. We know that, that what you do is, is a bad job. And let your face be darling.
It's pretty smelly, man.
And if not operated like, right, not only would you get complaints from the neighbors, but you get fines from
Do you think?
The state. And you are really stepped up in, in, in a great landfill director. If I'm not mistaken, the only female landfill director in the state of Florida we have right here in Columbia County.
Yes, sir, and I have a wonderful Yes, sir, and I have a wonderful staff that does a great job. So I thank you.
Pam, Pam, before you slip out, been discussion lately on our C and D. Y'all y'all gotta take pictures of that, right, in order to stay in correspondence, just to make sure people ain't dumping stuff on the C and D side that they shouldn't, is that right?
We do document if something's brought into class three that's not supposed to be in class three. We do document that, we keep a file of it, and we charge it back to the customer. If it is a, you know, a different material type, it's charged back to the customer.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, we got public works, Mr. Kirby.
Cut about fifty percent.
Not me, not me, don't cut me fifty percent. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Management's salary.
Before I present the final two department budgets, I'd like to refresh this board's memory of the purpose of this exercise. First is, we want to make sure our department heads express to the board what they feel, the needs and desires of their individual departments to ensure there's no miscommunication. And they do it every day. I'll let go what somebody said about Pam, Mr. Williams. Pam is that Jim in the rough that she was there all those years, and we could have put a better person in that role of leadership. That's the first purpose of this exercise. The second purpose David and I wanted to refresh memories on is what we're capturing here is the day-to-day operations minus personnel, minus capital projects, minus major equipment purchases. Once we get these numbers in, the same he's been keeping a close track, department by department. So at the end of the day, just using a number, if the number was thirty million last year, by the time we have the pluses and minuses, it comes in at thirty-five million. We know that's five million above on the operating side. David gets his numbers in in the month of July, with that law, new monies. You take that into consideration, take consideration of year-end monies, fund balance forward, all the other situations. You take the next step, capture phase one, go to personnel phase two, not on the capital project equipment placement phase three. So in our opinion, it's a three to four-phase process to kick the budget season off, okay? So with that, your final two entities. Okay, we'll start with utilities. Twenty-one, twenty-two, five, seventeen, nine, eighteen to six, eighty-nine, six, fifty-eight. This is inclusive of our utility director's salary. At Ellisville, twenty-four, seven to twenty-nine, six, that's on the water system, on the wastewater side, seventy-seven to one eighteen. Mason City, nine hundred to twenty-nine hundred. Fort White, one fifty-three to one seventy-five. Ellisville Water System, contractual services, operating cost, electrical services, wastewater at Ellisville, contractual services, operating cost, electrical, general insurance. Mason City, two thousand, contractual service, operating cost. Fort White, contractual service, repairs and maintenance. It is what it is, everything's going up, okay? Is there any questions on the utility side? Okay, moving right on to public works, ten, three to eleven, two. Basically, you have two significant line items that factor in here. Mowing, four oh six to eight twenty-one. Principal debt, two forty-one, six eighty-eight. That's your, the one item that we've learned to lease is motor graders. You have three coming online. Sign shop, four thousand, repairs and maintenance, automotive shop, two seventy-five to three twenty. Stock room, two thousand to five thousand. Gas, four forty-eight to eight ninety-six, there's a significant number along with your mowing. Admin salaries, five eighty-four to seven twenty-eight. Contractual services, thirty-five thousand. Insurance, two seventy to two eighty. Admin repairs, fourteen thousand to seventeen thousand. Wildlife control, fifty thousand to sixty thousand. Admin charges, five thousand. Non-capital equipment, twenty-five thousand. Operating supplies on the admin side, five thousand to ten thousand. Tree trimming salaries, four thirty-one to five seventy-two. Tree trimming repairs and maintenance, fifteen to thirty. Contract mowing, increased based on current mowing contracts. As we indicated earlier, we have five of them now. Once again, three new greater leases, we try to stagger those motor greater leases, not innocent one time. Sign shop communication, state signals over a cellular network. Our traffic ops superintendent, it brought our attention, modern technology is going to really help us moving forward. At the maintenance shop, we just annualized it out, that's what's causing us to keep the stuff going. Operating supplies, we need to gear back up, we're a little slack on our storm supplies. Gas and oil. So what triggered all these departments to basically double their gas and oil was we did a study at public works. And all of my years, Mr. Williams, you can echo this, this is the only the second time that we've had to go in the middle of a fiscal year and adjust our fuel. I had to take four hundred thousand dollars out of our road supplies, our road materials, to shore up fuel in the middle of fiscal year. So the second time we've ever had to do that. Operating supplies on the admin side, five thousand, annualized. Thirty-five thousand on contractual services for professional services for uniforms. General insurance, ten thousand based on actual annualized. Admin repair and maintenance, building repairs, buildings getting older, continuing repairing on that. Ten thousand dollars on wildlife control based on your current contract that you renewed a little while back. Insurance is accident claims, twenty-five thousand dollars on non-capital. This allows your supervisors in the field to have quick response on their work order system. That's working out well. I'm pleased to announce my guys will complete their on-the-job training today. We will have their inmates back as of next week. But obviously, we had several in-house guys trained to be able to perform that service that the Department of Corrections no longer can. But as short as the work staff is now, they're gonna be our backup, but I need to hire three people to look after our three crews. So we got our inmates back, we got our equipment, we didn't get our guards. So that's what that is. And roadway, right away, maintenance and repair for equipment used by our crews, we're back in that business. So basically, the two significant line items to make that million-dollar job are fuel and mowing, okay? That does conclude all your individual departments' presentation on the operational side. David and I have a lot of work to do between now and then. Mr. Kraus, whatever you have to add, that's all I have for you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Thank you.
Thank you. You got anything to add, Mr. Kraus?
No, we're just, like I said, this is a long-term process to get us to where we need to be in August so that we can adopt a budget in September, and we're gearing up for it, we're ready for it.
A question, David.
Yes, sir.
How do we, we get budget requests for fuel adjustments? Say, my budget was fifty thousand dollars last year for fuel, gas and oil. Now this year is a hundred thousand dollars. Based on what price, today's price or a average? That budget submitted on today's price of 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 gas and oil?
So like Kevin had mentioned in his presentation, Mr. Kirby, that is based on what he has experienced to date. Now, if gas prices go up to six and seven dollars a gallon, we still may be short.
I got that. So what happened in four months when gas come back down and continued declining the rest of the budget year? Where's that extra money in gas and oil going? It's not gonna be used because gas is on the decline. Do that come back as into the budget, show a a a savings in 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 two thousand, twenty-three, twenty-four budget? Hey, do it make sense what I'm asking?
Yeah.
Mr. Williams, I think I can answer like this. Staff can only move money around within an operating budget in a subcategory. So say for example, and as we just indicated, we took and did a study. Today, that's what if fuel stays right where it's at. The prediction is the numbers provided during these presentations will hold true. If that number goes down, that money cannot be transferred from point A to point B without coming in front of this board. So it will be right there. So if fuel drops back down in half, it's very reasonable to assume you'll have a lot of money to be able to operate with another fascist. But a department head can't go in there and say, for example, I got a million dollars worth of fuel budgeted. Fuel went down, I got five hundred thousand dollars of discretionary money. It doesn't work that way. It would have to come in front of this board for an external budget amendment.
Yeah, and 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 why I ask that, just about everybody that presented a budget, gonna present a budget to the board, they're gonna show this big increase in in gas and oil.
Right, we've asked everybody to double their gas and oil.
But as the year go by and that and that new budget year and gas prices come back down, there's gonna be a lot of money saved. And I I want to know where do that money come, do it come back to the board or what?
So what'll happen is at the end of the next fiscal year, say you budgeted an extra million dollars in gas and oil, gas prices go back down to where they were and we don't spend it. At the end of the fiscal year, if it's not spent, it would roll into fund balance.
Okay.
Any more questions? Motion for adjournment.
Adjourn.